All right, so good afternoon, everybody. Today, we're very happy to have Bjorn Schenke giving the seminar. Bjorn doesn't need much of an introduction. Most of you know him, but let me briefly say just a few words. So Bjorn is a senior scientist in the Nuclear Theory Group at BNL. He's an expert on many aspects of QCD and nuclear physics. In particular, he was one of the co-inventors of the Music Code to describe the evolution of heavy ion collisions. He's also one of the co-inventors of the IP glass model. And he has worked intensively on studying the structure of the proton in at JERA. He has received numerous awards, and most recently, he was named Fellow of the American Physical Society this very year. And today Bjorn is going to continue the discussion or the review of the town hall meeting. And he's going to focus on the hot QCD aspects of the town hall meeting. So Bjorn, please take it away.
Yeah, thank you so much. So thanks for the invitation and for the introduction. And you said it right. So I think this should be somewhat a discussion, I hope. And so by no means I'm an expert on all the aspects that were discussed at the town hall. But I'm trying to summarize what stood out to me and what deserves highlighting in my view. So let me actually start with where Feng stopped last time. And so Feng was showing QCD being at the crossroads and his view before the town hall on the left. And then what he had an impression that some people have some preference to do more of this or do more of that in the future. I would say, or I would take a little bit of a more positive maybe view. So we are at the crossroad, but in some sense, I feel like we're actually coming closer together and there's no
It's like a recipe for a traffic accident.
Yeah, so there will be some merging and some coordination necessary to avoid that. But we have basically, I think, and I come to that, you know, there's opportunities to really talk to each other more and make the nuclear physics community a bit more coherent, actually, and see this as an opportunity with the EIC coming. And I'll get to that a little bit more. But it may indeed be more complicated and look kind of like this. But in the end, I think we are at some sort of crossroad. But I think people will go different directions. But I think there is actually more cross-talk and a development, I think, also in the right direction, especially in the community and the users of the different facilities. But I get to that later on as well. So Feng already discussed what was done at the town hall. I don't have to repeat all this, but I just wanted to focus on the hot QCD part of it. So this talk is based on the presentation, the discussion that we had, and in particular, the whole hot QCD component of the town hall meeting that was held at the end of September at MIT. There were four hot QCD plenary talks on, I categorized it as like high temperature and high density QCD. And then we had an experimental and a theory talk for each of those. And I will take a lot of material from those, but also the parallel talks, of which we had 16, and then also open my contribution, many of them, that were also part of the hot QCD. Apart from all the cold QCD contributions that Feng discussed last time. Here's a photo, and there's a link. So if you're interested in the whole program, you can look at this using that link or just Googling QCD Town Hall 2022, and you'll find that easily. Now, the organization of this talk, again, structured with high temperature on the one hand and high density on the other. I think that's sort of the categorization that we use to structure the program. So do the same thing here. And then I have subbullets to get more structure in that, including the bulk part, then going to limits of flow and QGP formation. Then a big focus of the town hall is jets, because that's going to be a big part of the future experimental program. And then also connections to the EIC is, I think, an important thing to mention. And then I would comment on what was discussed about the future. And then high density, same thing. So basically, first of all, what was done and the diagrams and critical point searches, best two data is still mostly to come, and it's interpretation. Equation of state is another aspect, and the connections again to other fields like Frib physics and then also neutron stars. And I will also discuss the future opportunities, also what was discussed in terms of participation at international facilities. The recommendations, I believe Feng showed them. I also have them in my backup, and you can look them up on the website. I just wanted to focus on this part of recommendation one, which really focuses on the hot QCD part of what we want to do. And this starts with RIC. And the recommendation is to successfully conclude the RIC science mission. And it is essential to, in order to do that, to complete the S. Phoenix Science Program, as was already highlighted in the last Long Range Plan, and with the concurrent star data taking, the data taking with the new forward upgrade. And also, what's important, the full data analysis from all the experiments needs to be supported. And then we mentioned the LHC, and in particular, maintaining the US leadership in the LHC heavy iron program, as well as theory. And I think that's another important point, to have theory included in here. And we say explicitly to meet the challenges and realizing the full scientific potential of the current and future experiments. We need theory and also to establish new directions. So this summarizes most of what in the recommendation addresses hot QCD directly. And now I kind of want to jump into what was discussed at the town hall. And also, please interrupt me at any time if you want to discuss something or have a question. Now, of course, what was discussed at the town hall was developments since the last long range plan, but also the future. So one big development since last long range plan was on the level of, you know, understanding the bulk matter created in heavy iron collisions. And that is, for example, the transport coefficients, like she and bike viscosity of the QGP. And yeah, significant progress was made. This is a slide from Jean-François Paquet on constraints for eight over S and also the bulk viscosity. But in particular, eight over S, I think you have a very nice constraints from the Bayesian analyses here. These are all different ones. Here's, for example, the jet scape one on the right, fairly recent. And the posterior is the orange. And the prior was the gray. So we have, using the data, a fairly good constraint, especially around this, you know, suit of critical temperature that is tells us, which is somewhere down here. But somewhat more uncertain right at the higher temperatures. But a lot of progress has been made. So these kind of things had not been done at the last, when the last long range plan was written. And more progress is being made, more data is being included, more models are being used, et cetera. Another thing, yes.
Yeah. For the last slide, do we understand why the most right is most the reason why there are certain piece yet they're larger than the other two parts? Do we understand?
Well, I don't understand it in detail, but I would think that, you know, this tells you that these Bayesian analyses depend also on assumptions that you put in. So it depends on what you assume as your theoretical errors. It depends on which data you include and what errors are on those data. And generally, it depends on the model that you employ. So I think there is certainly wiggle room in these Bayesian analyses in terms of what bands you will get out in the end. However, they're not too different. But certainly, I mean, I don't think there's any rule that, you know, over time, these have to go narrower unless you're sticking with the same model, right? But these certainly have a variation there and have a different assumption, I guess, about also theoretical uncertainties, for example. But I cannot give you in detail, you know, this model did exactly this and this model did that. And that led to that, I don't know. But more generally, this is what I can say.
All right, thank you.
Now, there was also mention of, you know, accessing the different stages of the evolution. And one example of that is using electromagnetic probes. I think that's an important aspect. And Jean-François also showed, you know, that pre-equilibrium photons, for example, which are shown in yellow on the right hand side in this photon spectrum calculations, where we have different contributions, different colors, and the total is the red. The data is also shown in red dots. You see this range, which is shown in purple. That's where the pre-equilibrium photons are dominant or close to dominant. And that region corresponds to, well, that's production coming from an early time. And so basically, looking at this PT range could give you information about mainly this region rather than the later stages, which would be dominated by, well, the thermal distribution, thermal contribution from the QGP, but also the hadron gas, which would be at lower PT. So that's one other aspect where probably also in the future we want to look more into. And here's a slide from Shin Young, showing the same plot essentially, and also another energy, another collision energy, as well as the photon elliptic flow, which is still, you know, a little bit intention with the data, I would say, at least in some centralities. That's what has been known as the photon V2 puzzle, I guess, where getting the spectra and the V2 right at the same time is a bit of a challenge. So this is still something that's in progress. Shin Young said here, I should do Bayesian analysis, including the photons and the leptons. That's probably a good thing. And yeah, in general, it's a complex problem because you have all these different sources of photons. But I think it's a very promising venue along with other probes like jets and the usual bulk observables. Now, talking about the early times, even before that, the initial conditions, there's been quite some progress also, and it's been highlighted in several talks, which is that we have become really sensitive to details of the initial state. In particular, the nuclear structure of the colliding nuclei. And this really was highlighted in the Isobar run at RIC, where, you know, just looking at things like multiplicity distributions, or in this example, this is V24 in ruthenium divided by V24 in zirconium. And what's done here is this show, there's the star data, which is this ratio, right, of this observable, it's the black points. And then there's a model, that's AMPT in this case, but you can do this with hydrodust as well. And there's parameters of the nuclear deformation. So there's this beta 2, which gives us this, basically, what is it, quadrupole deformation, right? And then we have other deformation parameters. But also, what I want to point out is the neutron skin, if you will, or this is the edge diffusion parameter, which depends on the neutron skin, and also the size parameter. And what you see here, if you include this difference between ruthenium and zirconium in this neutron skin essentially, or this edge, you get a large difference. So you go from these open symbols down here. You start then including this, you go to the magenta points, and you actually jump up to this, to the data. And then R0 doesn't have a large effect. So there are observables now with such precision in heavy iron collisions that we are sensitive to the details of the nuclei. In particular, if you take ratios like this, you can extract these very nicely. And a similar thing is shown on the right. That's a different observable. That's the correlation between V2 squared and the mean PT in a given event as a function of centrality here in lead/lead collisions. And so there's some data and certain kinematics shown. And it's not shown here, but I think one is Atlas and one is Elise. Yeah, so this is not in the slide from Shin Young, but I think that's what they were. They're just a different PT cuts. And depending on the nucleon size, for example, that you assume in the model, you get a different result in the calculation. So if you have a smaller nucleon size, you have a larger value of this. And if you make it larger, you go down to the gray curve, for example. And then we also looked at changing the viscosity, right? So that's the yellow one, and that's not too much different from the gray. So this is really mainly sensitive to the initial state. And you can do a similar exercise with this observable also with the deformation, and you'll see a dependence on that too. So this is an interesting venue, and people are working together with nuclear structure physicists to really learn more about this and see how one field can inform the other and vice versa. And I'll get to that a little later as well, again. There was also discussions of, well, now we're also doing more in 3D. In particular, it's important for the beam energy scan. You kind of need to boost in variance everywhere. And if one wants to further do the low-energy and high-density physics, really, these 3D calculations are necessary. So that's why I'm sampling decorrelation, ripidity of various flow observables, for example, that you can study. There's also balance functions as a function of rapidity difference. And this tells you about really the 3D structure, not just of the energy density, but also of all the conserved charges. So this will be, we will be able to do very well with the star forward upgrade, for example. Now, there's another aspect, and I'm no big expert on this, but it's the spin dynamics in heavy ions. And this is essentially, for example, the lambda polarization coming from the vorticity of your system in sort of peripheral collisions or mid-central collisions. And this is something that wasn't even mentioned in the 2015 Long Range Plan. So just to make a point that some things just pop up, you know, and we can do them in addition to what we said are the priorities. And this was actually a Nature article in the end. And there's other aspects of this. There's the smoke ring structures, and it's smoke ring observable, where we have a jet going through, cheese, a jet axis. And then one can make this observable essentially and learn about, you know, whether such smoke ring structures appear in the medium. And also vector meson spin alignment. So if you look at phi mesons, for example, you will find a certain deviation from one-third, which is what you would have if there was no spin alignment. Because this is one component of the spin matrix. And if all components are the same, you get one-third. There's no certain alignment, but if they deviate from that, it's a similar effect as this lambda polarization. And so this is an interesting field by itself almost, which has evolved quite a bit. And also, on the theory side, there has been a lot of progress in spin transport theory, spin hydrodynamics, and so on. And so this has been highlighted, and we'll probably keep going exploring this. Then this takes me to small systems. So small systems have been a big, hot topic in the past. And here's examples of, for example, ratios of particle yields relative to the pion yield. And while the point is here, if you plot proton-proton, proton/lead, lead/lead collisions on top of each other, you see really this kind of smooth transition as you increase the multiplicity. And as Dennis said in his talk, this suggests a smooth continuum as you go from these small systems to the large systems. And what's, I would agree, is established really that even in the small systems, the bike dynamics of the low PT guys is really, and we're talking about light hadrons, it's really driven by the collective motion. And this was, as you know, really studied also with the focus on this, whether this is true in the Phoenix measurement of the different systems with proton due to on helium 3 to really kind of enforce these different initial geometries and see if we get larger V2 where we expected and larger V3 in particular in helium 3 calculation where we expected. And Star looked at this as well. Now, what are the limits then, right? So where do we have issues? And so one example is that Dennis showed in his talk is the heavy flavor flow. So we have charm versus bottom. So if you look at the V2 here in PP collisions, so we have charm looking the same as the light hadrons, whereas bottom is unclear, doesn't seem to be flowing as much. And similar results from CMS. And so it's not clear whether we have a definitive answer here. And the question is, why is this so different? So S. Phoenix, for example, in the future, wants to look at this with high luminosity here in P gold. And also at the LHC, one is looking for clarification of what's really going on in this reading of the bottom flow, if there is any. Another extreme would be, well, do we see flow in photon nucleus collisions? So there's indications from Atlas, for example, that indeed there is a significant V2 and even V3 in these algebraic collisions, where we just have a photon, almost real photon colliding with the nucleus and going in the other direction. And in high multiplicity events of those, it kind of looks similar to proton/lead collisions, let's say. But looking at E plus, E minus, and EP data, I don't think there have been signals found that look like an isotropy flow. But it's a venue that's interesting also for the EIC in the future, since, yeah, there will be half photon/lead collisions, for example. And we might have much better control over them as we know how the electron gets scattered, et cetera. And we can probably study this with much more precision and see if there's really high multiplicity events where some sort of collective behavior emerges. Now, there's more mysteries to smart systems, namely, if you look at the high momentum probes, so jet. And I come to the jets more specifically in a little bit. But the jets in smart systems show a significant anisotropy. So this is a plot of the lead/lead results in green of V2 over a really wide range of transport momentum for, I guess this is all charged particles. And then on top of that is the Plet minimum bias multiplied by 1.5, and it has a very similar shape. And then there's the result for a cut where the jet PT here has to be about 100 GB. In any case, they all show a finite V2 at a very large PT, so even up to like 50 GB for 50 GB particles here. And the question is, you know, how does this happen if the RAA or RPA is not very much different from one? How does this work? And one major opportunity is to really study this in systems that have better controls in terms of centrality selections, for example, than Plet. So oxygen/oxigen collisions in Run 3 are a good opportunity to better understand what are the limits to jet quenching, on the one hand, and QGP formation in small systems related to that. And also, yeah, in future runs, right? One can, with ultra-high luminosity, study small ions and actually go to things like electroweak bosons/plus jet correlations, for example, or even go to top quarks, jets that go to jets, et cetera, and really have a way to study, and I come to that, the spatial and time structure of the QGP if it's formed in these smart systems. And what's shown here is, again, different systems with the RAA in the model. And we see oxygen/oxigen, for example. You would expect some suppression more so than in Plet. But in Plet, we really have the issue of centrality selection in particular. And this is an example of oxygen/oxigen collision in a model. Now, there's heavy flavor as well. And there's different aspects to it. So I just kind of list what was mentioned in different talks in the town hall. And certainly, there's charm and bottom, thermalization and flow, which I've already shown a plot for. There's the charm diffusion, and here's a diffusion coefficient showing in different models. So there is some spread, but, you know, they're actually not too far, including lattice calculations. And it was mentioned that, you know, in 10 years to go, then bottom just as well as charm, as we do charm now, because we will have much larger multiplicity, not much luminosity and statistics to do that. And another question, which really interesting in general, right, is the question about confinement and how hadrons assemble or melt. And that's, for example, the upsilon. So this is this thermometer that you've probably often seen, with different binding energies for the upsilon. So at different centralities or collision energies, we expect one, the most strongly bound to survive, but the more weakly bound to be dissolved. And so this would give us a temperature measure of the produced matter. And also, one can look at ratios, for example, of lambdas over D zeros or also for the bottom equivalent of that. Also, rare hadron in medium production is interesting, and the heavy core transport, and I've already mentioned the charm diffusion. But elastic versus inelastic, the flow in the initial condition, heterization, what's the role of prolessence? So there's many aspects to heavy flavor that still require work. And for example, S. Phoenix at RIC will look into these things. I'll come to that as well. Now, a big theme, as I said, was jets, because that's something one can do very well at S. Phoenix at RIC, but also in the future at LHC with higher luminosities, et cetera. And there's a lot of developments in this field of jets and heavy iron collisions. There's, for example, the jet substructure. This is a slide from Shin Young. There's many new developments in this direction. So looking at the jet substructure really can tell you about a variety of things, including the medium response to the jet, the spacetime structure of the shower, and also the role of color coherence. Heterization, recombination is related to that. And also, there's new techniques in order to remove the otherwise inherently non-perturbative aspects of what's going on inside the jet by doing grooming and certain ways of clustering to really have observables that are more sensitive just to the perturbative aspect that where we have controlled calculations as opposed that where we have controlled calculations as opposed to the non-perturbative stuff that we don't control very well. We want to learn what controls energy loss. We want to study actually correlations between gammas or Zs and jets and also Ws and jets. Medium response I mentioned, and this plays a role for substructure, but also in itself, it's interesting. And we want to learn about the scale dependence of the QGP structure. For example, there were suggestions that if there's quasi particles in the QGP, there should be things like basically rather for large angle scattering, right? If you have collisions with a quasi particle. It's called Molyar scattering. I'm not so sure why, because it's soft. That's multiple scattering. And I don't know how you would distinguish this from really a particle moving through a dense system that's more better described by fields. But maybe someone in the room has a better idea why that is, but that's often called Molyar scattering, sort of for this intermediate scales that, that, that people are interested in. And also the time structure of the QGP could be studied by looking at top quark initiated jet quenching where there's a certain amount of delay. So the top quark will decay into a W. The W is boosted and will decay in a QQ bar pair with a small opening angle. So that will be further delayed because it's going to look like a color neutral object for some time. And so these kind of jets would be sensitive. So is the idea to the late time medium that they would actually start seeing at later times. However, again, for this, you would need, first of all, a high luminosity and probably you want smaller systems where you, you have a a, a good chance, I guess, to, to make these, these top quarks at a sufficient amount. So here below, I showed, so these, these, first of all, these, these plots are just going to illustrate the the, the medium response. So that's a rare fission wave and things like that. So these are interesting effects. But it has been actually discussed for a long time when we were looking at V three, but before we were understanding V three, we thought there were moth cones. But still, the moth cones may be there. And, and this medium response to a jet is still quite relevant. And these are some questions that we discussed yesterday with with some people working on the, on the white paper. And so the questions that, that, that we think are important ones for the future is related to jets are, is there coherence length in the QGP below which the QGP does not resolve branches of a proton shower separately? What is the temperature dependence of the opacity of the QGP? Are there quasi particles in the QGP related to what I just said earlier? And how does jet quenching depend on the length and time scale of QGP the jet travels through? Is there a minimum length for jet quenching to occur, for example? Related also to the small system studies. Also for jets, there is space interference. It plays a big role as well, and in the future probably more so than it has. So there's been different analysis that have been done. He's just some example. I'm not going to go into much detail, but there's a variety of jet observables, right, that you can include in such analyses. And what you can do is then find constraints on transport coefficients like Q hat, which is done here. And these are various analyses, including, for example, jet escape. And so what one example of what one finds is a strong temperature dependence, but a weak jet energy dependence. Now, I, talking about jets brings me to S Phoenix. So that's one thing that's actually on the time scale, probably shorter than this long range plan, but it falls into, into the timeframe. Which is the, obviously the new experiment at, at Rick, where the focus is on, on jets and quarkonium. For example, jet substructure that we just talked about is, is one big goal of the studies at S Phoenix. And the quarkonium's just to be very size of the probe, right, very how, how it melts and also study particle energy loss. And this, this is like from, from Megan introducing S Phoenix. And before I come to, I'm sorry. Yeah, I will talk about the future and LHC in a second. I just wanted to mention that, jumping a little bit away from, from this now. What was also mentioned in several talks is now the role of some new techniques in computing, like artificial intelligence and machine learning. So for example, Shin Young and Dennis showed some examples. So there could be deep learning assisted jet tomography. Basically using it in experiment essentially, or first of all in models, but then could, could apply it to the actual data. And there's a long list of papers relating, related to artificial intelligent machine learning in, in this field, for example, for, for jet classification and other things. And so this is an emerging thing, which definitely should have a place in the town hall and the long range plan. The connection to the EIC is certainly important, right? We, we, we come from Hot QCD that EIC is not really considered a QCD, a QCD machine by any means. But there's, there's many connections. So one example is from Shin Young show, right, where one has energy loss, of course, as well in the cold nuclear matter as one has in the hot nuclear matter and the calculations, for example, are, you know, not, not too different in, in in, in, in some frameworks. Instead of a temperature, typically one has a saturation scale, et cetera, et cetera. But you have, you know, things like RAA and so on, depending on your different nuclei that you're colliding your electrons with. And there's also adonisation mechanism, jet modification and stuff like that, that we would, that we would also have in, in, in heavy ion collisions. The connection to small systems is something I've mentioned already. So I just repeated this here. So we have similar effects in photon heavy ion collision as we do in proton heavy ion collisions. And so there is certainly connections and even VTEP in his talk really emphasized this, that there are tremendous intellectual commonalities in jet and heavy flavor physics applied to hadronic heavy ion and DAS reactions. And it's a natural point of convergence for the broad QCD community. It is important to realize and advance those connections. And now's the right time for focused theory effort and so on. And, and so I, I, I would agree with this, right? And there's something I said in the beginning that really this is all not too different and there are indeed commonalities that, that, that we should exploit, right? We have different expertise coming from different fields. But this is a chance to really combine forces. Another thing that was stressed several times is really, we have to make sure that we complete the science mission at, at Rick, and this is certainly something that has been recommended before in the long range plan and will, as I said, be in the new long range plan recommendation. So Megan emphasized that completing its scientific mission is important and the, 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 the program doesn't end when the collider at Rick shuts, shuts off, right? The data has to be analyzed. Otherwise it's a big loss, right? So the examples she gave here, so that Phoenix submitted over 50 papers for publication and 40 PhDs and competed their thesis after the 2016 run, right? So after the last run at Rick is done, a lot will still happen. So this was something that has been made emphasized at, at the town hall several times. Now, Rick Future certainly, as I mentioned several times, includes S Phoenix as a major component, but also STAR. And so here's a slide from, from Pritish. I don't think I should go for all of it, but certainly there is a, a large variety of, 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 of things to be done. So for example, the improved precision network function, data inspection, best two data. Novel observable studies like the ones we talked about, like vertical effect and chiral effect. And also props of gluon saturation with the forward instrumentation, small system collectivity, nuclear imaging connection to nuclear structure. And the 3D structure that we also talked about and the UPCs are all interesting and topics that STAR with the forward upgrade in, in the future running will and should address. And so there's still lots going on at Rick. For LHC, I also had a, a bit of a collection here and it's maybe a bit confusing the way it's structured, but I just collected a few pieces from slides from Yanji and also from Ant's Timmins. And there's a variety of things they, they list. For example, well, this reaches from nuclear PDFs actually with Atlas and CMN, CMS, sorry. And as well to, you know, things like improved understanding of initial density profile and the, the bulk stuff that we are still very much interested in. And also precise determination of the, of the transport coefficients, et cetera. Microscopic structure of the TGP that addresses the, the, the jets as well, intermediate scales and, and, and other topics. There hasn't been too much of, you know, precise statements on what exactly are the big questions. And there's something maybe we can discuss more. And one has to be really careful in laying out clearly what, what the questions are in this high temperature regime of the hot QCD part. What are really the questions we're most interested in? What's, what's exciting? We have to be very clear in, that we, that we make a good argument for that we make it very clear what the priorities are here and what the opportunities are. And, and I hope maybe we can discuss a little bit more after this talk as well. Because according to what Dennis has shown, the future of the experimental Hot QCD at LHC and at Rick is, is quite tremendous. So he showed the collected data to set the scale. And then on the right, how much more, right, relative to what's been collected, there will come in the future runs. And it's amazing, right? So for all of these, there's gonna be much more data compared to what's already there. Even though the running is not going to be for all that long. So, right, so it's, it's clear, this is normalized always to what's there. These are always normalized to the same thing. And then relative to that, he shows how much more there's going to be. So that's quite impressive for all of these. And since for the light ions, there hasn't been that much, right? It looks even more impressive relative to what's been collected. But in, in any case, for all these cases, it will be much more data than there has been so far. So big opportunities, I think, opening up there. Now let's me, let me move. I don't know. I'm doing on time. Sorry, it's
You still have, let's say 10 or minutes.
Okay.
Go to discussion.
So let me go to the dense QCD. And so there's been one main talk by Jackie and I took some, some of her slides. So one big aspect of dense QCD obviously is, is the study of the face diagram and of the search for the critical point. And she gave this example, you know, we're still waiting on best two data for the most part. But then there, she shows sort of like what we, what has been done on the theory side. So this is what the best collaboration basically came up with as a, as a framework. So there's a big package that, that is aimed at, you know, simulating heavy ion collisions in the beam and just can and, and finding out by comparison to data eventually, you know, what if there are signatures of, of the critical point, for example, or first order phase transition. And so, well, she says more detailed model of the first order transitions need significant theory development still and also connections to neutron stars and also neutron star merger data is, are begging to be made. So for example, here, what we need on the heavy ion side is an equation of state in the field. So this is for essentially the future. The equation of say that large mu be over T. So that is QCD can go to mu be over T of maybe 3.5 with some new methods. So this covers sort of this darkened area of this face diagram down in the bottom left. We need the equation of state as a function of all these conserve, well, these chemical potentials in this case of different conserve charges have to be taken into account in, in different temperature here. We have to have initial conditions that really give 3D initial conditions for the whole team you knew and the conserve charge currents. And this includes modeling, right, of baryon and other charge stopping and the fluctuations properly. We need the description of critical fluctuations within hydro because there will be a breakdown of hydro because we get large relaxation times, right? If we have critical fluctuations. And there's been developments that to feed the slow modes separately and, and extendability of the hydrogen, and this is called hydro plus, for example. And also one needs transport provision as a function of not just the temperature, but other chemical potential, the baryon chemical potential. So there's, there's, I think, still a lot to do on the, on the theory side. Some of this has been done or is, is currently coming out with. And here's some examples of really how a simulation looks where we have a 3D initial state and hydro evolution and really see where a typical collision would go over time through the face diagram, right? So this is not just one line, obviously, because we have a whole big fireball with a distribution at any given time. And we have the time evolution integrated here too. So this is everything. And so if there was a critical point here, for example, right? Then we would go past it, but we also would go far away from it in, in the same collision. And in addition, handle, we would get if we also look at different abilities, for example. But let's go to, to some more that, that, that Jackie talked about. Certainly. So we are interested in various things in dense QCD. So that's the critical point as I talked about. And that includes the dynamic and static invasibility classes of that and what, how this would affect data. And but also there's other things like lambda polarization, spin hydrodynamics at large densities, right? Baryon stopping, the, the role of isospin. Also the what are the hadron versus quark division freedom at, at the, in the low rude S collisions? And can we extract the equation of state from that and use it for neutron stars, for example? And also other, other interesting phases of matter at, at large mu be. And that's always an interesting question going up to color superconductivity and things like that. Neutron stars, right? Is really something that's again, some synergy there that's, that's coming out more recently. And this is just again a slide from Jackie where she asked about interesting questions in this regard. Particularly, you know, what, so I don't want to go through all this in detail. I, I don't think I have time, but the question is, you know, what can we do on the heavy ion side and neutron star side and how can one learn from the other? For example, and I think I have this in the latest slide. Yeah. So let me go through it here. We have some differences clearly between heavy ion collisions and neutron stars, but there's also things that, that, that can inform one another. So for example, heavy ion collisions are more symmetric nuclear matter in terms of the charge fraction, right? So depending on the nucleus, right, we go from 0.38 to 0.5, whereas neutron stars are more asymmetric, that's mostly neutrons. So this charge fraction is much smaller. But for example, the neutron skin from heavy ion experiments that we can extract, right? Which I discussed earlier, can be compared to neutron star title ability, right? And both of, of that is related to the symmetry energy. And also results from FAIR in the future, hopefully, and FRIB could constrain the synergy energy better. And then inform these, these different fields. First order phase tradition would have effects also on neutron stars, for example. Mass twins with the same mass, but different radii would exist in that case and And this could be also observed when post-merger peak frequency, when you look at liego results, for example. But yeah, there's still differences, right? Neutron stars and heavy ion collisions are not on the same axis if you draw multi-dimensional face diagram because they have difference in charge or equivalency isospin and also strangeness, for example. But there is connections and that's certainly interesting to follow. So Lewis here and there was discussion at the town hall of really how to proceed in dense QCD. There's CVM at fair that's been planned. And that has very high interaction rates and precision measurements really are gonna be possible of high order baryon fluctuation correlations of dilepton spectra and also hypernuclear, for example, and hypernucleus nucleus interactions and things like this. And so there has been this proposal to really have a part of the US community participate in this. Later, this was a bit for the Alpha Action Initiative, a bit more generalized, participate in foreign experiments that that deal with this. This fair, there's a bit of an uncertainty, right? So right now it's not clear when it's actually gonna be be finished. There has been delays. It's gotten worse over the last year. But on the other hand, there is really a commitment, right, from NuPeq where they say complete urgently the construction of the flagship fair and develop and bring into operation the experimental program, including CVM. And so hopefully, we've gone away. So the future of dense QCD experiments has been discussed also by Xin Dong. And here's some timeline. We have the best one at RIC and then best two. And so hopefully, best three, if you will, will be on the time scale. I don't think this will be counted. The plus is probably an important point here. But there's gonna be interesting measurements, which kind of partially went through like baryon fluctuation correlations, which also been on best two and one. Dileptons are important as well as hypernuclear polarization, etc. So let me summarize and then we can discuss. So I would say hot QCD is an extremely rich and broad subject. So there's many, many, many aspects to it and a lot of them. Still a lot of open questions. Rig data analysis will go on past the one with S Phoenix and Star Report Upgrade for sure. And some of us then will move towards the EIC and some of us will focus on LHC heavy ions and others will focus on dense QCD, for example, at fair. But I think really one field will and can inform the other. And there are even more synergies, as I said, you know, with the nuclear structure community that we started talking more recently and with nuclear astrophysics. And I think this is actually a really nice development that we're starting to talk to other nuclear physics groups more. And I I think it's a it's a great development. And so, yeah, we are at a crossroads. But I do not really see us moving apart as a community, but becoming really more interdisciplinary, if you will. And generally broader, which I think is is good news as we move towards the the EIC, but also future hot and dense QCD. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bjorn, for this very comprehensive discussion, all the wealth of open questions that we have in our field. I'm very impressed by that plot that you showed on the data acquisition that we still have for the next years. It's very impressive putting perspective what what's to come in our field. So let's now have some time for discussion. I see that phone has is hand raised. Please go ahead.
Bjorn, very nice talk and summary. And I do not disagree with your conclusion. Okay, can you go to the slide thirty? So so here, of course, you mentioned about equation state from NADQCD. NADQCD calculation can go to mu be over T about three point five. I mean, of course, there's always a tricky question. Can we actually localize critic point from NADQCD? What's your what's your perspective when what 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 is the future potential from NADQCD calculation to to locate that critic point?
I mean, now, I think they they're looking at whether there's singularities or, you know, they're looking at radii of convergence in the Taylor series and things like this, right, to see if there's any sign of a critical point. And they don't seem to see any. But this always comes with assumptions, right? They they kind of make assumptions that they don't have singularities in 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 this plane. And so I'm I'm not sure really. And and I'm not really a lettuce QCD expert, but I all I know is that, you know, some claim that, you know, they they see no sign so far of a critical point in the lettuce calculation. But I I also think that that goes along with a certain set of assumptions that they have to make in addition to just the first principle calculations. So you're asking from that excuse, will be able to see if there's a cutting point or not. And, yeah, I'm I don't know. I I think there is probably gonna be developments that that are gonna do a little bit better than what we what we're doing now. So I wouldn't say no for sure, but I think it's it's not an easy task.
That, yeah, that I'd agree. Okay, thank you. Thank you. New, you have a question?
We have a question from Peter.
Yeah, Bjorn, thanks for the talk. Very, very nice, very interesting. You go back to your yeah, it's like slide eighteen or twenty thereabouts, you you emphasized big questions, but you kind of got this. Let's see, next one, there we go. Right, to the bottom right. So I would classify those as kind of the big questions for the jet sector. You kind of presented it that way, but there's somebody didn't come back with it. And I make a negative comment. For big questions, they're kind of small. They deal in part with, you know, the nuts and bolts and mechanics of how jets interact with the quark flow plasma. But only partially kind of touch on the bigger question, what is initially, we got started in this jet business by asking, oh, can we use jets as a probe of the plasma? And when you do deep inelastic scattering, you're more interested in what the nucleus does than what happens to the electron. And likewise, you know, it's kind of two sides of this, you know, the effect of the plasma on the jet, the effect of the jet on the plasma, both are interesting, but I think it's it's, you know, extracting the properties of plasma are really, really the the kind of the, you know, the soul of the of the enterprise. Quasi particles certainly, and I would advocate, I mean, you'd make it had a nice discussion of that. Let me point out that actually that's a that's where STAR will really make the impact is making the impact is making the impact at RIC. I'm clear what S Phoenix will add. But but for instance, the first one, the coherence length, that is very important kind of correlations of the plasma. But it's phrased in a kind of a technical nuts and bolts way. But I think one one should ask the broader question, can we understand the correlation length from substructure minimum, something of that nature? It's a very hard problem and it needs the interaction of theory and experiment. But I would encourage the committee, since you said this here, you're discussing, you know, the big picture. I'd encourage the 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 committee to kind of broaden the the scope of these questions to really really truly make them kind of big and really kind of with in inconsistent with the kind of the ambitions we had, you know, when we started. Now, when you're in the middle of it, of course, that that technology is kind of gets overwhelming, but you have to step back and really, really look at the big picture. And I'll ask one question, then I'll stop and ask for your responses. Essentially, in all of this is the Bayesian inference, which you very nicely emphasize. And I did your comment on my negative comment, but I have a question as well. What will be the statement from Hot QCD about computational nuclear physics and the need for investment in that?
Okay, so thank you first of all, Peter. I think that's that's a very important point and I fully agree with you that these need to be formulated in a way that really focuses on the physics questions and the the big questions. And these are results from the first brainstorming and they're still not, certainly not the how we will formulate them, but certainly we'll take into account what you what you said and that's very important. For the statement about the computation, I don't know yet. I can't tell you what the statement exactly will be. But, you know, this will certainly be an aspect of the the white paper where we emphasize the need for computation, including, you know, based on I didn't really show much detail on what Abhijit discussed, right? But in Abhijit's talk at the town hall, this was very much emphasized. And this will certainly go into the into the white paper. Namely, the the needs for these simulations and Bayesian analyses to 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 track down on transport coefficients, you know, properties of the QGP. Using these new and and very exciting methods. But I I can't tell you exactly what the statement will be, but we will certainly address it.
All right. Thanks, Peter. Now we have Arneeshka. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bjorn, for this very broad view of the field. So can we go to, I mean, I guess we can go to slide thirty. I I have a, I guess, question and comment there. Thirty, sorry. So the all the theory developments that these are all for hydrodynamic codes. And I think one can successfully argue that going to lower energies hadronic transport would be the framework to use. And, you know, there are also some developments needed there. There's questions about the degrees of freedom and of momentum dependent interactions, but there has been great progress there. And also within the best collaboration, allowing for very effective use of Bayesian analysis, for example. And I really think this needs to be mentioned. I mean, this is the framework for the fixed target energies for CVM energies, future effort four hundred for sure. And, you know, there needs to be support for both theory and just code development. So I'm wondering what's your opinion on that?
No, I I fully agree. And I I I might, well, I don't know, it may, I I certainly recall seeing it when I was preparing this talk, but my my subconscious bias here on hydro may have overtaken. But don't take this presentation really as what will go into the white paper. This is really just my view of what I took from the presentations of town hall at this point in time. But but these comments are very helpful, right, to to remind us, because as you as you say, there's there's a lot of different things and we don't want to forget anything. And so certainly, I mean, I agree. These aspects of hadron transport and the theory developments in that direction. And also, you know, I think what what was shown in Jackie's slide here on the first order transition, right? That needs significant theory development, for example, that's gonna be very important.
Well, well, we do have a, I mean, you can have a hadronic transport with a first order phase transition. That's actually one of the things that the best relation has done. The question is about the degrees of freedom, right? Like, there's no change to quark and gluons. That may be an issue. Or maybe not, who knows? Maybe the physics is not really sensitive. But yeah, that's one that's one of the things, the first order phase transition at higher energies and higher temperatures already is accessible in transport. Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, for for, yeah, telling me your view on this.
Yeah, thanks, Arneeshka. So now, Sheen, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bjorn, for the very nice presentation. I have one question on the basic that you can say had high energies. And now, one of the main goal, at least in my opinion, is trying to really characterize a QGP transfer parameters using the reconnect C data. And we see also, you showed that this ADOAS or heavy quark special division coefficient. I think one of the thing we see now is that there probably we have a good control at result cannot near TC region while the high temperature on certain is quite large. So the questions are, I I think, what kind of observable or measurement do you think that would give us more constraint to really understand its temperature dependence? And maybe another related question is also, we have necessary different transport coefficient like ADOAS, diffusion coefficient, or even Q hat from theory power, theoretical point of view. How can we understand this together or can we put them together to have a more coherent understanding of the QGP properties? So, yeah.
Well, I'm hoping that for the higher and higher temperatures, for example, the electromagnetic probes could be helpful. So if, I mean, there's a lot of uncertainty and the 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 theory certainly is. It looks like a little bit lacking and taking everything into account, but if you look at anisotropies in in photons and dileptons, et cetera. Which have, you know, as I showed, in a certain regime, a lot of sensitivity to the early times and the high temperatures, right? That would be one one venue one that would hopefully would help if one included these in the Bayesian analyses, for example. So electromagnetic probes, I think, have still an important role to play in that regard. I I'm sorry, I I'm not sure if I
Sure, yeah.
I remember the last part of your question.
It's a basic relation between, say, different transport pattern to the ADOAS or deficient coefficient. I thought one of the heavy flavor programs is trying to really understand this and the microscopic picture of the QDP. Basically, the deficient coefficient can give you some microscope dynamics, the QCD. And so the relation with respect to ADOAS will, on this, both are like a long wavelength property. Certainly will have some relation. So from your perspective, is any kind of a, how do we relate this these two together? Coherent picture and how that can help us understand the the high temperature QCD in this phenomenon?
You mean in terms of or?
In terms of relation, ADOAS versus, say, heavy quark diffusion coefficient and the Q hat.
Right. I'm not sure. I mean, you you're asking essentially for a theoretical relation that
Right, kind of.
That probably model dependent. I I don't know. I mean, that's something I have to think about more, I guess.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Sheen. Sheenian, please.
Yeah, hi, Bjorn. Nice to see you here. I have some question, one question is specifically about a small system and you mentioned that even at for small system, even at twenty GeV, there's still seems to like some collectivity. And on the other hand, and there are theoretical calculations, you know, by many people shown that that you could have this anisotropy because of initial correlation, right? And in particular, at twenty GeV in small system, I think that could also be the, you know, the mechanism for such observed anisotropy rather than collectivity.
It's it's certainly something one has to explore. I mean, there is, for example, I mean, I don't know about twenty GeV, but if we're, you know, when people did things with initial correlations from the CGC, for example, right, at at higher energy. One has to look at the the systematics, for example, right? So if you change multiplicity, how does the signal change in the calculation versus the data? And the the collective models usually were able to reproduce that, whereas, for example, the initial state condition from the CGC was was not. However, you know, we've also shown that the there should, the the initial correlation should be there, right, in any case. And the question is, do they survive? But if there's not a lot of final state interactions, then then I would think that the initial correlations should still be visible in the in the signal and be dominant in some cases to the observables. Twenty GeV, so you're talking about twenty GeV root S gold gold collisions?
No, no, I'm talking about twenty GeV or PT.
Oh, you're talking about PT, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. In the in the PT. Certainly, yeah. I mean, that that's that's still the mystery. So I I don't I I don't think I made a statement of
I think I think that's where you can make really make a connection between between the future EIC and and study on small systems.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, it it wouldn't. There, there may not be, there may really be not much of an effect of the collectivity, I I guess, right? If you're looking at the the high PT probes, because Uh, if you're looking at uh the the high PT probes, because that's still, as I said, a a mystery to some degree, right? Why is there this large anisotropy? And why is there no no large other jet modification, right? Or jet clenching uh in in the small systems? So one will have to look at other small systems, right? More controlled small systems, like symmetric ones, like oxygen, oxygen. But also, yeah, in the CGC, sorry, in the EIC as well, I think, yeah. If you were looking at anisotropies there, right, for high PT particles coming out. And you see something similar and the multiplicity is maybe are not that large or, you know, the kinematics are nicely constrained for everything. The EIC could inform you what's going on in these small systems. I think that's certainly true.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Sheenian. And do we have any further questions? Uh, I don't see any more hands up. Okay, so thanks a lot, Bjorn, for
Yeah, thank you.
For the seminar and for taking the time to answer all the questions. Hopefully, this was also helpful for you in this process of writing the the white paper.
Yes, absolutely. I really appreciate the the comments. They they will be helpful going forward as well.
And and hopefully you can continue the discussions also uh via email or uh
Sure, absolutely, yeah. I'm open to every comment, question. By email or
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you, Bjorn. Bye, bye.
Thanks.
I see you on Thursday.
What is going on with PSI and fair?
Hi.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, all right.